The Honorable Presiding Officer is now in the session hall. Shall we all rise?
Good morning, everyone. For our invocation, may we request Reverend Carl Cortez of Sam 23 Great Shepherd Church Publacion.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of God as we pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this morning, for the great and wonderful day. Thank you also, Lord God, for, Lord, extending our lives. We believe, Lord God, that you are the source of everything, even, Lord God, the very life na may naa kami ginawa. And, Lord, right now, we humbly ask for your guidance in leading upon us that decision, Lord God, you may grant the spirit of unity, understanding, cooperation, and may the discussion be filled with respect, integrity, genuine concern for the welfare of our people, people of Palomolok, oh, Lord. Bless also, Lord God, our local leaders, our mayor, our vice mayor, all members of the Sangunyang Bayan, even, Lord God, all the public servants, that every decision they make, Lord God, will accord in truth, justice, and compassion. Father, we pray for wisdom to discern what is right, courage to pursue what is good, even humility, Lord, to listen to one another, and may everything they accomplish today will bring honor and glory to you alone. Father, once again, be glorified and magnified. This is our prayer in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Everybody says amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Carl Lopez. Cortez, Cortez, please remain standing for this fourteenth regular session is now called to order. For later, our recitation of Panunupas sa Katapatan sa Watawat, Honorable Elisa Rivera, and then the recitation of the Councilor's Creed by Honorable Billy Bird Bythus.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magibig, kadas na si ganan, alam ng puso sa tinitoy buhay. Upang dinirang, duyan ng magiting, sa manludupi, tikapasi sinil. Sanodatap, tutok sa si koyat, sa namin kong pagkao. Ayunatap, tulakawin sa pagkayang nilamahal. Ang isakap, atawat, duyan ng kumay na natininig. Ang ituwin, atkarot nga kayda, ang haydi ba tinitinig. Luwag na paraw ng war, atik pa si ka, duyan ng ita, bibiko. Ang inikaya na pagkayong amin, ang palakay ng kahilusayon. Kanyanap na salto tapado, taglayang nilisang tutok ng pinipino. Ibat-ibang rivo, pinanggalihan, lihan lang sa pataguyang na matibay na mamamayan. Wala buhok, na silihi, at sa malam na siya. Ang sanway na kroya, dino, tayo na, palabila, talumbay. Sama-sama sa pataguyang na bayan, amin na butina, magatangina, butasa. Tayo rin, ang taisa, sa hibigas at ibo, para sa payasang. Paya pang tahanan, ito'y sa miyaya, ikas na mayaman, na pahinay masagana. Ikyang mugayang bawa, lumikan na talumbay, sa lira pati hawa, kami tagapag. Wungulok tahanan, na kayamanan, lalumpag yaman, ni tuturat ramaran. Kawakka may, pagtebay, na tinkatumpulan, ipagbuhi, di sisigas, sa libutan. Wungulok tahanan, na mangkagawa, wungulok tahanan, na mangmabayalin. Most na'y katutugo, at mga kristyalo, labitbisig sa paglaga siyang minimitin. Ipagbuhi, bawat ang taas, ilabay ba, ang ino, ang ino ba, bawat ang taho, itumpuhan. Wungulok tahanan, na kayamanan, lalumpag yaman, ni tuturat ramaran. Kawakka may, pagtebay, na tinkatumpulan, ipagbuhi, di sisigas, sa buhatan ayala. Ipagbuhi, di sisigas, sa buhatan sanibutan.
Please take your seats. Secretariat, please call the roll.
For the fourteen, for, for the ninth time, this twenty eighth Sangunyang Bayan is in perfect attendance.
Congratulations and thank you for that, though we can proceed to our order of business.
For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, we have the minutes of the thirteenth regular session held on October seven, twenty twenty five, at the Espey Session Hall.
Any corrections to the minutes of the preceding sessions? If none, the same is approved as presented.
For the privilege hour, the question hour, this morning, we will have the post-festival update and financial overview of the twenty-second Flumlok Festival, presented by our municipal administrator and our municipal treasurer.
Since the resource persons are not yet around, may we proceed?
In relation to that, Madam Presiding, the, our municipal administrator sent a letter addressed to Honorable Vice Mayor, informing this august body that he cannot attend in this session because he is still on the way from Cebu, going back here, heading the delegation for the assistance to the victims of the earthquake in Cebu City. But he did send us the minutes of the post-evaluation meeting they had, as well as the feedbacks and recommendations on the event that we had in our celebration of the festival and foundation anniversary.
We'll just reproduce the same and then distribute to the members of the body.
Actually, we have already, we have already scanned and sent it to the group chat, Madam Presiding.
Okay, thank you, then we can proceed. How about the municipal treasurer? So we will just suspend later when she comes, so let's proceed.
For the first reading and referral of measures or proposed communications. Number one, we have a communication from our municipal mayor dated October nine, twenty twenty five, addressed to this august body through Honorable Floris Bonsoil Local Laws, Municipal Vice Mayor, and the Presiding Officer. Dear ladies and gentlemen, greetings. Pursuant to the provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, the implementation of the forest development projects, certain forest management functions of the D E N R are devolved to the local government units and are mandated to share with the national government the responsibility for maintaining the ecological balance within the territorial jurisdiction. In view of the above, respectfully request the august member of the Sangunyang Bayan for the passage of a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to enter into and sign a MOA between our L G U and the D E N R Region Twelve, represented by Regional Executive Director Felix Isalizer, to formulate an effective forest land use plan as basis for comprehensive forest land development and other environmental programs. Please see at those pertinent documents, thank you and warm regards. Signed, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, our municipal mayor.
This will go to the committee environment unless Honorable Salada would like this to be urgent. Yes, Honorable Salada is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move that this be taken as urgent matter.
The same is urgent, next?
Next is an ordinance authored by Councilor Salada, regulating the use of public roads, streets, sidewalks, alleys, bridges, parks, and other similar public places, and the use and display of business signage along the roads and highways in the municipality of Palomolok South Cotabato, and providing penalties for violations thereof.
This will go to the committees on rules and transportation, the lead committee rules.
And number three is an ordinance authored by Councilor Buntuyan, allocating funds for the health insurance program of all barangay officials and barangay employees in Palomolok South Cotabato in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred pesos.
This will go to the committees on finance, health, and rules, the lead committee health.
And number four, and the last, is a copy of the annual audit report of the municipal government of Palomolok for the year ended, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, from the Commission on Audit, or COA.
Just an info.
For the committee reports, we only have two reports calendar this morning, and that's the committee report from the committee on education. Subject barangay ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance, providing free school bags with school supplies to all daycare pupils of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, providing funds therefore and for other purposes. And also, the committee's report on barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance establishing the lend, lend a hand, a cash assistance initiative scholarship program to the college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, including its I R R, and appropriating funds thereof.
Committee on Education, you now have the floor.
Good morning, Madam Presiding Officer, and to my colleagues in this august hall and everybody therein, good morning. This is the first committee report from the Committee on Education. Barangay Ordinance Number Five, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance providing free school bags with school supplies to all daycare pupils of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, and providing funds therefore and for other purposes. Facts and findings. Number one, the above measure was referred to the Sangunyang Bayan Committee on Education for review and proper action. The concerned committee then held a meeting on October two, twenty twenty-five, in attendance where Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido, the Chair of the Committee, and members Honorable Angelique Costas and Honorable Dave Amor. Also present were Honorable Rose May Orbisido, the Chair of the Sangunyang barangay Publacion Committee on Education as proponent, and Honorable Krissa Carla Dapanas, member of the said committee. After going over with the measure with some clarification and suggestions, the proponent and the committee members agreed to change the title specifically from daycare pupils to early childhood care development learners. The committee finding the measures significant and in order recommends to adopt this committee report to pass the resolution approving barangay ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-five, with its approved title, an ordinance providing school bags and supplies to early childhood care and development, or E C C D learners of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, and to consider the same as one of the urgent matters into this session. This is reported by the Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido, the chairperson, and concurred by Honorable Angelique Dave Costas, Vice Chair, Committee on Education, Honorable Calixto Salada, member, and Honorable Dave Amor, member, and also Honorable John Edward Lumayag, also member. I move for the adoption of this committee report, in particular, its recommendation, Madam Presiding.
Unless there's a motion for interpolation, the same is approved.
And then the second committee report, still coming from the same committee, and subject of which is barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance establishing the lend a hand, a cash assistance initiative scholarship program to the college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, including its implementing rules, regulations, and appropriating funds thereof. The facts and findings, the above measure was referred to the Sangunyang Bayan Committee on Education for review and proper action. The committee held the meeting on October two, twenty twenty-five, again to discuss review, to discuss review and consider the measure. And in attendance were S B Committee on Education, Honorable Ligaya Orbisido, the chairperson, Honorable Angelique Dave Oak, and Honorable Dave Amor, members, also member. Also present were Honorable Krissa Carla Dapanas, the Sangunyang Bayan Chairperson of barangay publacion as proponent, and the honorable members of the S K Council. After a thorough discussion, clarifications and suggestions on the proposed measure, the proponent together with the council members revised the title into an ordinance institutionalizing the cash assistance initiative, a scholarship program for college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, and appropriating funds therefore. The committee finding the measure significant and in order to adopt this committee report to pass the resolution approving barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five, with its revised title, an ordinance institutionalizing cash assistance initiative, a scholarship program for college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, appropriating funds thereof, and also to consider the same as one of the urgent matters into this session, reported by the Honorable Orbisido, concurred by Honorable Dave Costas, Honorable Salada, Honorable Amor, and Honorable John Edward Lumayag. So I move for the adoption of this committee report, and in particular, its recommendation, Madam Presiding.
Unless there's a motion for interpolation, the same is approved?
Thank you, Madam Presiding.
For the calendar of business, unfinished business, we have none. Business for the day, second reading. For urgent matters, we have three measures considered urgent. First is the request of our municipal mayor for a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to sign a MOA between the L G of Palomolok and the D E N R Region Twelve, represented by Regional Executive Director Felix Isalizer, to formulate an effective forest land use plan as basis for the comprehensive forest development and other environmental programs.
Honorable Salada.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, good morning, everyone. Madam Presiding Officer, for the information of everybody, we have already been approved forest land use plan, five-year forest land use plan during the nineteenth Sangunyang Bayan. So therefore, Madam Presiding Officer, I move to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to sign a memorandum of agreement between the municipality and the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Region Twelve, represented by the Regional Executive Director Felix Isalizer, to formulate an effective forest land use plan as basis for comprehensive forest land development and other environmental programs.
Unless there's an objection, the same is approved. Next?
The number two and the number three, which is the last, are the report, reports of the committee on education. First is the barangay ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance, providing free school bags with school supplies to all daycare pupils of barangay publacion, this municipality, and providing funds therefore and for other purposes. And then followed by barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five, also of barangay publacion, entitled an ordinance establishing the lend a hand, cash assistance initiative scholarship program to the college students of barangay publacion, this municipality, including its implementing rules, or I R R, and approving funds thereof.
Honorable Orbisido.
Again, good morning, Madam Presiding. This is now the resolution approving barangay ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-five, with its improved title, an ordinance providing school bags and supplies to early childhood care and development, or E C C D learners of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Other Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido and co-sponsors are all members present. Whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven of Republic Act Number Seventy-One Sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, the Sangunyang Bayan is mandated to review barangay ordinances to ensure the consistency with the national laws and municipal policies. Whereas the above titled ordinance, number five, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay publacion, this municipality is in line with the national policy of strengthening the implementation of the early childhood care development, or E C C D program, to include provision of educational materials to the learners. Whereas this ordinance of barangay local government of publacion is a laudable manifestation of concern for our children's future. Therefore, premises considered, on motion of this representation, truly seconded by, and all members present, the body resolved as it is hereby resolved to approve barangay ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance providing school bags and supplies to early childhood care and development E C C D learners of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. And resolve further that copies of this resolution and ordinance be furnished to the Sangunyang barangay of publacion for its information, reference, and implementation. I move for, if there is no other question, I move for its approval, Madam Presiding.
When moved and seconded by Honorable Amor, the same is approved unless there's an objection.
Another is the resolution approving barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five, ordinance institutionalizing the cash assistance initiative, a scholarship program for college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, and appropriating funds thereof. Other Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido, co-sponsors are all members present. Whereas pursuant to Republic Act Number Seventy-One Sixty, section fifty-seven provides, the Sangunyang Bayan is mandated to review barangay ordinances to ensure their consistency with the national laws and municipal policies. Whereas this scholarship program aims to extend financial assistance to poor but deserving college students of barangay publacion in this municipality. Whereas this ordinance, barangay local government of publacion is a laudable manifestation of concern for our youth's quest for education. Therefore, premises considered, on motion of this representation and truly seconded and by all S B members, the body resolved as it is hereby resolved to approve barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-five, with its, with the title, an ordinance institutionalizing cash assistance initiative, a scholarship program for college students of barangay publacion, Palomolok South Cotabato, and appropriating funds therefore. Resolve further that copies of this resolution and ordinance be furnished to the Sangunyang barangay of publacion for its information, reference, and implementation. And if, I move for the approval of this resolution and ordinance, Madam Presiding.
Are you already seconded, Honorable Falcon? I have, uh, okay, so, Honorable Falcon?
I'm just questioning the, what's called this, spelling, is this correct? As it stands?
Yeah, that was introduced by the S K, did themselves. Because in their ordinance, it is coined from, coined from the word assistance and Sanguniang kabataan. Okay, assistance, cash assistance. Oh, sige, eh, ano lang, eh, eh, ano lang, we have to resolve it to be consistent with, with the report. Thank you, and also nakita ko dito 'yung spelling ng barangay.
The, I think the former style will be taken by, taken care of the secretariat. So, second, okay, so the same is seconded, the same is approved. Let's proceed.
For the scheduled second reading, we have none. Third and final reading, none, and assigned business, none. Let's go now to the announcement.
To the members, please stay, we will discuss some matters.
So, committee meeting on Wednesday, Committee on Environment. And I'd like to announce that the codification will, will start on October twenty-three, Thursday.
will start on October 23, Thursday, and October 24, which will start at 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., at most, at the S B Session Hall. Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Thank you, some more announcements? If none, this regular session is adjourned at 9:28. Let's rise for the closing prayer by... Honorable Falcon?
Let us bow down our heads in prayer, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you at the close of this session with grateful hearts. Thank you for guiding our discussion and for allowing us to fulfill our duties as public servants entrusted with the welfare of our community. We praise you for the wisdom, understanding, and unity you have... unity you have bestowed upon us today. May the decisions we have made and the resolutions we have passed serve the best interest of our constituents and bring about positive change in our municipality. Lord, continue to bless each one of us. Grant us integrity in our purpose, compassion in our service, and strength to face the challenges ahead. Protect our families and keep our communities safe, peaceful, and progressive. As we leave this place, may your presence go with us. Let all that we do reflect your love, justice, and righteousness. This we ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, through the intercession of mama, mother, amen.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning again.